Whether you want to meet and whether you feel good about this, but we're doing everything in our power to keep the convention center clean. We're not booking any events after this weekend. And so the convention center will be closed to the public, will be doing regular marketing, taking bills, doing all of that stuff. But the doors will be locked and you'll have to call and make reservations if you want to come and pay the bill or you need to contact us. Essential staff can be working from home. But in regards to those conventions, other than MSHs, we don't see any of them as essential. From an economic standpoint, yeah, this is going to hurt. The only thing I'm looking at here is a total economic catastrophe for the town, which is unfortunate, but from a safety standpoint, it's just not essential unless it's keeping the mine open.
It's more important.
So, hold on, Kyle. How are, when you have your MSHA convention, how many guys and ladies show up for that convention?
So, we're talking about, you know, anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred people. What we've done, because MSHA has gone on since this has started. And so what we're doing is we're wiping down high-touch areas, doorknob handles, bathrooms, drink service areas, we no longer have that publicly for everybody can go up and touch it and everything like that.
Are you serving lunch?
Caterers are, and they're, and they, and up till, and I don't know what's going on today, but up till then, they were serving, it wasn't a buffet style, it was, they handed you what...
How are they seated when they're in training?
They're seated at classroom-style seating with tables and we go through...
This distance, Elizabeth and I?
Yes, yeah, and when they do, when they go on breaks, our staff goes through, we wipe down the tabletops, we wipe down the A/B equipment, we wipe down anything that would be a high-touch area. And they break usually about once every hour.
So I understand the cleanliness, but that, the number one way of transmission is actually being within that six-feet distance. So what you may see later today is an order from our Public Health official ordering, mandating, the only actual effective order that the sheriff's office may be enforcing later today is a six-feet distance. Because I have two concerns, one, we're not, I mean, we split out these chairs in here, it's all nice and neat, but this situation, it's not really ideal, right? And a hundred guys and ladies in a room, two feet apart from each other, that's not going to cut it. And I can just see now, the Republican convention's happening, and the first thing those mothers want to do when they walk in is shake each other's hands and pat each other on the back and get real close and talk about their political agenda and stuff.
Right.
Like, that's just not going to happen.
Well, that's why, again, I would hope that the events, because a lot of the events have taken the responsible action, I've got to talk with MAND at the line when I get done with here.
I think we can still do that somehow, if their only order is to maintain that separation. Then we just have to get creative on how to maintain that separation.
And that's, and that's easy.
That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying cancel it, although it does cause me concern. We do have to keep our company going as well, so...
Oh, absolutely.
Anyway, just stay tuned on that.
I will.
Okay.
So anyway, yes, we are, we are not having any other events after this weekend. And MSHA was pretty much the one where we were like, hey, you guys, you guys are essential, finish this out because you have to do this. And we're hoping that everybody, the Republican party, does the right thing.
Okay.
And I think on this, just so you know, the agenda item was the advisory board, so your tour and rec board would be canceled, am I right here?
If they can do, so the alternatives would be...
Well, here's, so here, my question on that one, we are, this was a proposal for budget augmenta- or the, on this agenda was a budget augmentation, a tentative budget hearing, and then proposals for all of the grants for aid to organization. We've told all the applicants that they are not required to come in and make a proposal like they have in past years, so we've cut that one off. And we're not going to meet, unless you guys tell us we can't meet. We weren't going to meet in the White Pine Room, which is a smaller, closed-in quarters. We were going to meet in the Grand Room, and we were going to encourage people to call in and use the hub.
This board doesn't have the authority to tell them not to meet, because it's not a classic advisory board, but in practice, I'm going to ask this board to approve also, so we don't have this many people in a room again, is we're going to try to set up this go-to meeting and provide internet links, maybe even work with Ian to rebroadcast and then kind of document that for the public, so we can reduce, anything we can, keep, still allow them, information to be public and open, but also reduce the number and just try to discourage in-person attendance as best.
And I'm on board with that completely, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else, let's see, that was just, anybody on the advisory board that wants to comment on what the action we just took? We have canceled, we voted to cancel all citizen advisory boards.
Did you take a vote or did it all move?
I thought we voted, okay.
We motioned.
Motion's done, we just move on. Okay, who made the motion? And we made a second. Motion by Ian and second by Travis. Any other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, okay. Number four is done, number five, on page two, discussion for possible action, consideration to approve four ten-hour workdays for four days' duration, schools are closed in White Pine County. Offices to remain open, but allows non-exempt staff to rotate days in order to provide for minor children, Tim Bunch.
And this, and actually, this was put on here long before the governor made his declaration. I'm just looking at different options, and Burton had discussed it earlier as well. And we've had great discussion from Bill as far as just kind of alternating the shifts, and I'm just looking at alternatives. That might be one option where we actually do that to mitigate how many people are in an office setting. I know that that may not be the ideal situation, and we may not even have to even consider this if we were to do the rotational and have people come in that can work in the evenings or later afternoons, and having morning shifts so that we're not having mass bodies in an office setting. And we don't have that scenario for most of the counties as far as having a lot of individuals, but we do need to reduce some of the close proximity that we have in some of these office settings.
To be clear, this is not to say that offices are going to close one day of the week, it's just to allow another tool for department head to be able to modify schedules to have some sort of rotation.
Correct.
Didn't we just give the leeway to the department heads to do this? I mean, we have this discussion.
I think in our order, we're going to do that, so.
Exactly, we can adopt all these recommendations in the emergency declaration, but this is just a good opportunity for him to propose. I don't know if we discussed, just saying, department head, do what you need to do. If that's the order, I mean, that really makes it easy, but...
In this number four, where it says that county department heads have emergency powers to direct appropriate staffing levels in their departments.
Put work hours, handwork hours.
And add hours.
And access to the office.
Yeah. Just to modify that.
So no actions necessary on the side, and you can include it.
So that can be included.
And then just for the board, just, if you look at some of these items that are on here, what I was looking at, and I had discussion with Elizabeth about this, is I was thinking that, how can we as a county maintain operations, minimize the amount of people that are in office spaces, and at the same time not be hit to the bottom line as far as our finances? And so some of these, some of these options that I put on here are basic ways of not impacting us on a financial status.
Okay, so...
This is no action, Mike?
We were, we'll take the action.
Yeah, we'll put a motion into the circular.
I'll leave it open, so if I bring back to it, we'll make a motion. Okay, any other thing, Kim, on that question?
No.
Okay, we go to item six. Discussion only on the flexible interpretation on the sick leave annual leave and time pursuant to DOL guidelines and recommendations, Tim?
So what I'd like to do is, first of all, just let you know, the Department of Labor came out with a statement yesterday that basically, in regards to COVID-19, stipulated that businesses, business owners, entities, need to consider flexible working conditions, again, leaving it up to the business owners or those that are in charge to think and address our personnel and being cautious and empathetic as to the situations. And obviously, each community is different, ours is very unique, we have our own challenges. But taking that into mind, I referred back to White Pine County policy six dot two on sick leave and the use of sick leave. And it addresses it in, and I'm sorry, I forgot my glasses this morning, in B, it says, when quarantined. And we've heard a lot about self-quarantines, we're not at a point yet where we're being directed that we're quarantined, but if we were to take a flexible thought process on the sick leave policy, if we're self-quarantined, there's a very flexible addressing there as far as supervisors or department head, versa. And also, we have people that have been brought on within the last, and it's a minimal amount, five to ten people max, that don't have accrued time. And so hence, the reason why I also put on the next item is down, a couple other alternatives is how that could possibly be utilized for our staff.
We've already addressed the use of sick leave in the manner that Tim was talking about in the declaration. Okay?
And this was a discussion I have only...
Correct, yep.
Okay, that was number six, we'll go down to number seven. This also is discussion only on leave contribution from employee to employee for specific need in dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic, Tim?
And again, this is, a few months back, we were talking about the contributions to catastrophic leave bank and what that was causing, individuals that actually wanted to contribute. It caused a little bit of an uproar in certain situations, but an idea that I've had as far as having individuals, we have a lot of county employees that are parents, and they're trying to work out the demographics right now as far as who's covering for the kids. And we heard from the school superintendent that it's going to be approximately four weeks at this point that the kids are not going to be in school. And so we know that we have county employees that are going to be impacted by this and trying to navigate what that looks like. And the pool's not going to be an option any longer, and the library may not be an option any longer. And so I'm just trying to figure out, how does that work out? On the catastrophic leave bank, and I had a discussion with one of our union stewards here, Chrissy Chady, yesterday, and I reached out to the union as well, and I digress on that. Let me come back to that later. I talked with Chrissy yesterday, and she and I had a great conversation in regards to catastrophic leave bank, she's on the committee as well, and she's a union rep. And one of the things that we discussed is, it sounds like it's feasible to have an individual donate forty hours of leave time to an individual that they know that does not have it, that has kids, to meet the needs of this situation where they can donate the forty hours. That was a great idea, the only pushback on that was, we don't want to have people that are gathering hours from each individual, stockpiling leave time, and then abusing it. So thinking in those terms, if we limited it to forty hours of donating, but specifically to an individual that has children or sickly parents or someone that might be their caregiving, and they need to have the time, and they don't have that, to give them forty hours of catastrophic leave, so to speak, that's being donated. If it's not utilized in the four-week period that we know right now that the schools are going to be out, then whatever is not utilized would go back to the contributor. Then that way, it's a win-win, we're doing good things to help one another out there. The downfall of the catastrophic leave bank is there's this perception that if a group of us donate to the catastrophic leave bank, and then the committee goes in there and they disseminate amount of hours, there still may be individuals out there that don't have the hours or are not getting it, and they are just as desperate as anyone else as far as covering that timeframe. This is just one component of this, I know we talked about the two weeks earlier that we, that we put on hold right now for further discussion. But if we were to have something like that in place, those that use their leave first, and then you have the catastrophic leave, and we just kind of build it, to then we actually go into a point where we have to do something that's going to be financially impacting on the county. Again, that's, that's the whole reason of doing this, is I'm just looking for avenues where it does not impact. And there may not be an appetite for a lot of our county employees, but we have a lot of seasoned employees that have a lot of leave bank that have asked about donating, but they are more have to donate to individuals that they know are in need rather than throwing it in a pool.
So this is discussion only, and we'd have to get the unions input in writing probably on this, because they're the ones that want that control in their contracts, so...
And actually, actually, I need to speak to that, because I did talk to our union rep yesterday, and he said, whatever the county is wanting to do as far as taking care of people, we can go back and have that conversation. He wants me to send him notification as to what we would like to do. But he said that as long as we're taking care of our employees, whether they're classified or unclassified, the union is a hundred percent behind us, and we will, they'll support us.
So it's up for discussion from the board.
Okay.
I'm concerned about, you know, the need to balance equity with the need of the individual and those donating, I wanted to be sure that if something unforeseen happens to them, that they can still recoup that.
We would still have to follow, we'd still, I personally think that we still should follow our CBA and our policy as far as maintaining the two-hundred-and-forty hours, that you still have to have two-hundred-and-forty hours when you have to donate, you still have to have two-hundred-and-forty hours in your bank to be utilized. So I'm not looking to go outside the boundary lines of what our CBA, the only difference would be to be able to do the donation one-to-one, and on the second part of that is being able to get the hours back if it's not utilized within the four weeks.
Yeah. I think as long as we maintain the two-forty, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
And leaves it in the hands of the employee to make the decision.
This item, I mean, it's a discussion only. It's a discussion only, but what I'm saying is, I don't know if Nicole's drafted, like, printed out the agendas for next week, if we can maybe add that item for an action item.
First time to add things.
For discussion and action.
Thank you for that, that's, that was item seven. No, that was item six, this is item seven. Discussion only on leave contributions from employee to employee.
Well, that was discussion.
That's what that was here.
That was seven, we just did that, that was discussion only also.
And then eight?
Eight. Eight is discussion only on ensuring limitation of personal and social distancing in general meeting areas, for instance, commission meetings, EOC, pursuant to...
I'm sorry, I'm...
Can I finish, please?
Yes, sir, sorry.
I'll start over. Discussion only on ensuring limitation of personal, personnel and social distancing in general meeting areas, for instance, county commission meetings at the EOC pursuant to presidential and governor directives, Tim, go ahead.
Sorry about that. And we've already talked about this in several instances this morning, but just with our continuation meetings at the EOC, as well as this meeting, and Mike already addressed this as far as just being cautious as to the social distancing and what we can do to mitigate close proximity. And the admin building, and I'm so thankful that that was brought up, because that was my thought as well, there's a lot of people off the street that walk in that admin building and hover around in the hallways and whatnot, so anything we can do to mitigate that. And it's not just the admin building, I'm sure it happens, you know, in the courthouse and other places, but just wanted, and then I also addressed this with Bill Calderwood, too. His guys are all pretty much, they're away from one another throughout, the only time that they are together, which we discussed, is in the lunchroom, where they all sit around the table and have their lunch break, and we have to make sure that we not, not have that happen. And it's not, and it's not just the road department, I want to make sure that's clear, I mean, anywhere else where we have groups that sit together and have lunch or whatever, we need to make sure that we're cautious of what that looks like.
Okay. Anything else, anyway, that was a discussion, item number seven. Now number eight is discussion only. So we're done with that, Mike? We have a public comment on the regular meeting, should go back to reopen or redo anything.
No, just go back up to item one.
I will, I have a comment. So for the public's information, we're going back to item number one, and we'll go through all the ones that we have, we'll take actions. And then at the end of that, when we're done with that, there'll be public comment from anyone who wants to address what we've done today. So that being said, let's go back to page, page two, item one. And it was discussion for possible action, you approve to declare a county emergency through Resolution two zero dash one seven, and to adopt those recommendations contained therein due to the COVID-19 virus, state and local conditions, in an attempt to follow and implement the President of the United States and the governor's recommendations and mandates, and to facilitate and obtain federal, state, and local funding and supplies.
Yeah, I just want, I mean, it's important, so I just want to clarify, are we going to go through the whole list of the resolution to sort of parse that out?
Well, why don't you hit them up with your additions that you sketched out?
So number four, there's a couple tie-dos above which I will rectify, but number four, that department heads have emergency powers to direct to direct appropriate staffing levels in their departments, including work hours.
And what about office closures?
Yeah, I added that, so we, so add section giving department heads authority to control public interface consistent with mitigation directives. I don't make that easier to read, but that was what I noted myself, basically, so you control your office in line with the public health.
Other than number four, where did you add that? Because I saw it was on the second page.
I just, it's got to be add, so I'll probably put it at number five, it'll probably be a very nice concept, yeah.
So we're saying, including office hours, employee work hours, access to office, working from home, staggered shift, like, just complete discretion of the department.
Well, I had down office closures to help cover the hours, so not just the work hours if the doors are locked, but if you need to have the doors locked, you need the appointments.
All right.
Right, you have two different concepts, right? You control, you have total discretion over your staffing levels, consistent with the public health mandates for the virus, and you also have total control over space, access to your office. Right, to keep, to protect the public or vice versa, so...
What else you got?
I got, well, we talked about the library, right? Also, there's going to be a section added to address employees working for other departments consistent with the CBA. And that, I was actually going to put something in that the department heads endeavor to allow their employees to work for other departments consistent with the CBA, you know, as needed. We're going to know pretty quick where the needs have to be, so... I did want to clarify a little bit, the leave policies that Mr. Bunch discussed, because as written in number six, I was going to amend that to say that the department heads approve paid administrative or annual leave consistent with the public health crisis. And we had drafted the sick policy be amended temporarily within the next thirty days to basically omit any physician's authorization, because that just puts a crush on the public health, you know, that we don't need right now. Is, he asked for leave, all types of leave to be used interchangeably. Is that the direction of the board?
That's, that'd be my direction.
I think we just leave it as flexible as possible, and then everyone uses their best judgment.
Just thirty days, you know, and if there is a, there's a couple other things hanging out there. As one, we have to make sure that these individuals have that leave, you know, because six, I read six differently, that we're approving paid admin leave. Well, we're approving the use of their paid admin leave.
Yes.
Not admin, I don't want to approve additionally at this time.
Exactly. Existing paid admin leave?
Yes, of their, okay.
Existing, yeah.
And then if they are confirmed cases, COBID, they have to require some sort of release from the doctor to return to work.
So that you're suspending all that here, suspending all the doctors' authorization, so if someone wants to self-quarantine, they can, but if they're found positive, they need to have that doctor's authorization to return. Yes.
There's some new regulations on being pushed out about, they have to report, that kind of stuff. The law may change in the next twenty-four hours also in L.A., so we'll readdress this, and we can amend this at the next meeting if we have to.
Okay.
Because we may be required to make a paid leave, we don't know yet, okay?
But right now?
Yes. On number five, on number five, when HR director, higher staff has need to address issues, emergency issues, there still has to be a budget for that, so you still have to discuss that with, you know, finance and find the emergency.
And I also added, or delay. Delay in hiring, right?
And you have added the existing paid leave, if you could just bold and underline that, so it's fundamentally clear to the public that we're not.
The only thing I'm missing in here, and I don't know how to capture it, and maybe we don't have to worry about it, still know there's employees that want to use their leave, but they're intimidated or don't want to ask for that leave because they feel that, just like our normal culture is, I don't want to call off sick just because I got a little cold because I'm expected to be at work.
What about number eight? We just open it up to leave because now we have approved an entire bank of leave. I think that captures that, doesn't it?
It says, without fear of retaliation, right?
Yep.
Absolute discretion.
As long as the department or office can be staffed, and then we'll provide essential government services.
Is that language capture what we're trying to address here?
I think so.
Okay.
I think so.
Yep.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
We're on number one, we've heard from Brian, and we've looked at the things that we have on our directive. The only one we really discussed, I think we've talked, I think we need in writing just what we're going to do at the library, because we haven't really decided, have we?
Yeah, we, we asked that, that mirrored number fifteen. But it is a discretion of the department, yes.
Yes.
That's why we'll just banter this round.
Oh, this, we'll move to approve with Brian's edits.
Yeah, with the, with the modifications.
I amend the document. This idea of reducing office, office staff, telling your department heads to reduce office staff, you know, to have a sixty percent of office staff, because right now, it's written that it's on the employee to say, I want to stay home and use my leave to stay home. But we also want to encourage our department heads to say, okay, which one of you guys wants to use your sick leave and stay at home, because I got to reduce this office staff? We have in there the language about the emergency powers to direct appropriate staffing levels, but does the commission want to encourage more departments to reduce staffing levels? Because you could be a department head saying, I like the staffing levels the way they are, and I don't want to change anything, I think, I'm not going to make one step to change anything I do in this office.
Number nine, all county departments shall endeavor to reduce the number of staff working in county buildings, department heads are required to allow employees to take leave and go home if used more.
Do you want to put a number on that, or is that sufficient?
I think for now, that's, I mean, if, again, I mean, if we come, I think on the next, on Wednesday's agenda, we just need to have a broad, rough-stroke agenda. If someone's giving us a hard time, then we can crack down on it.
Let's just let them see if, put it on the owner's system, and we can see if we can get it done.
If we're seeing resistance, we can make a change.
I just wanted to just discuss.
Yeah, and I think that we do need to have this back on the agenda for next week for discussion.
And pass things we will...
Especially action to see what has changed in between, this could be, you know, a working document.
Give the public more notice, too.
Yeah, but nevertheless, for our, the county's ability to do what they need to do, we do need to have a declaration.
Can we put in there that, in that same sentence, that trying to reach a sixty percent reduction?
Well, that's just, I mean, it's whatever you all want to do. I'm hearing it's not necessary right now, and that's fine.
Yeah, let's, let's give it a week, see what we get. And if we're seeing resistance, then we can, we can make a change to the document and add a number.
I'm going to, anybody got any more questions on, before we take an action to declare the emergency? Anything? So with what we discussed, we're going to go into item one, discussion of possible action to declare a state, declare county emergency through Resolution two zero one seven, and to adopt those recommendations contained therein due to the COVID-19 virus, state and local conditions, in an attempt to follow implementation by the President of the United States and the governor's recommendation and mandate, and to facilitate in obtaining federal, state, and local funding and supplies. So I'll look for a motion to approve that.
Move to approve Resolution twenty dash seventeen with modifications as discussed.
Motion by Lauren, second by Ian, any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passion Adams. Item two, is today.
Just one quick thing in regards to one, on the discussion on the library, Job Connect, the state will not let Job Connect offices close down, and they have internet and computers there. So for people that were concerned about the unemployment, filing Job Connect offices open.
Any other public comment?
Did you have a comment?
Also has any public comment, George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see what you folks are doing for the county, county employees, and that's well and good. As a businessman downtown, which is shrinking, I'm concerned. I may have to shut down, I'm not sure which category I'm going to fit in this essential services. But I have other things I can do, such as repair buildings that I own. I can't get a building permit. I don't know if you're a building inspector, ever made a vacuum eureka that I reported was missing back in September of 2019? I want to move ahead, but I don't want to have to close my business. I want to pay for a building permit, can't get it. And yet I'm listening to what you folks are doing for the county employees. Three-quarters of my social security goes to paying property taxes alone. And here I am, sitting, going nowhere, housing shortage, we got to use them, dry camping, BS. I want that building permit, you tell me how much it is, I'll bring it. I want that building permit, you tell me how much it is, I'll bring it in cash. You're considering all this other for the county employees, and I approve for that, and I applaud you for that. But don't be the taxpayer outside knocking on an empty door.